Good morning. I'd like to call to order the July 24th, 2025 Commission Conference in preparation for the regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Right now, before we begin our business, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of former Alabama State Senator George Callahan. I met George in 1985 when I came to the county and he was in charge of, they didn't call it IT back then, but whatever he did, he worked with these punch cards and these big noisy machines that were in our room, that were in this huge room, and he loved every minute of it. He was a great conversationalist. He could engage you and talk about everything, but his favorite subject was politics. And he remained that way as every time I saw him, he had, well, what do you think about? And of course, he had his own idea, but he was a great person, a great leader in this community, and he was a person who just sought to build bridges. And he will surely be missed. So if you would, just take a minute of silence in remembrance of George, former Senator, State Senator George Callahan. Thank you. Remember his family in your prayers. Okay, do we have speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Providing, Presiding Juvenile Court Judge Edmund Naaman would like to address the Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for what we are getting ready to do in transferring the possibility of the Juvenile Detention Center to the County Commission. Tag, you're it. You know, I think this is the culmination of about 18 years that we have been discussing this and trying to find a way that we could make it happen. You know, I am, as the Presiding Circuit Court Judge of the Juvenile Court, the only judge in the nation that also has oversight of a detention center. And there's a lot to that, and you will soon find out, and you know it, and you've provided for us to really help us create, I think, the best detention center in the nation. We have great people working. We have, you know, I'd like to see some improvements in the, in the building itself. It's old, but we do the best we can with it, and it is because of you and what you've been able to provide for us. But it's gotten unwieldy now. There's so much. We're the busiest, probably the busiest detention center in the state. And I know for a fact, and the numbers bear it out, we are the busiest court in the state of Alabama, the busiest juvenile court. When I get back today, I will deal with 41 cases of abuse and neglect dependency petitions involving kids. Just yesterday, 13 children slept on the floor of the Department of Human Resources Building because there was no place for them, no foster care. There was no building, no place. They're just temporarily having them sleep on the floor. That's the condition, and that's the situation that's going on right now. It really requires the judge's full attention to really doing that work. And, you know, when you have other responsibilities, it really takes away from what you're able to do. So I appreciate you. I thank you so much. I think ultimately, it's going to be to the benefit of everyone that you take this over. So I do want to tell you thank you. You know, I know it's, it's going to be hard and it's going to be difficult to get this done, but it's been 18 years in the coming. The last thing I'll say, that, you know, I do it kind of begrudgingly. I like to have control of it. I like to know that what we're doing in detention, that we're providing quality education, quality mental health care, you know, quality, you know, quality services to children. And so I'm a little bit reticent to turn my back on it, but I won't turn my back. But it, but rather than what I have to do now, say a child makes a complaint of being abused, but they also have a case before me. I'm compelled to want to go talk to them and find out and flesh it out, but I have a case before them I'm going to have to hear. It creates all kinds of conflicts. So I thank you for removing that burden from me and for doing this. And I know it, I think it's, I have full faith that it's going to be run just as it has been, really excellently. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you. Any other speakers?
No more speakers.
I just want to say thank you, Judge, for being here, and thank you for the excellent job that you do, you and your staff, the other judges. I know it's, it can be quite a burden at times with, with what you, what your, the exposure to the problems that, that you see. But we so appreciate you and your work, and it really reverberates throughout the whole community. Then everybody, I think, understands how much you care and how passionate you are about young people. So thank you.
All right. No more speakers? Mr. Kerr.
Good morning, Commissioners. We ask that you consider the following. One, approve a list of claims. Two, hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance Report. Three, approve amending the Mobile County Commission July 16th minutes, item number 28, to include the ARPA project number for the first amended sub-recipient agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Mobile. Four, approve contract with Mobile Area Veterans Day Commission in the amount of $5,000 for its annual Veterans Day celebration. Five, approve appropriation contract with the Continental Commissary in the total amount of $10,000 for its summer cooking class programs and emergency kitchen funds, with funds divided as follows. Six, approve appropriation contract with Junior Achievement of Alabama in the amount of $1,000 from District 2 Education Funds for its economic empowerment programs. Seven, approve agreement with law enforcement agencies for grant funds awarded by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for overtime traffic safety enforcement under the Community Traffic Safety Program for the state-designated Southwest Region's counties as follows, for the programs as follows. Eight, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Regional Senior Community Center Foundation in the amount of $13,200 from District 2 Commission Funds for the Landscape Services at the Connie Hudson Mobile Regional Senior Community Center. Nine, approve one-year extension to the Health Services Agreement among the Mobile County Commission, the Mobile County Sheriff's Office, and NAF Care to amend staffing modifications and provide a cost of living adjustment to base compensation. Ten, rescind and-
What would be the effective date? The extension would begin when?
I think it's August 1st. I'll have to look. I don't have the booklet, but I think that's the-
Yeah, it's, it's August 1st.
Yeah, it says August 1st.
We spent a lot of time reviewing it, but-
Is there any financial consequence of the extension? It's on the same terms as-
Yes, ma'am. I will say that after much review and discussion and research and discussion with the multiple pub examiners, this contract is not required to be bid. It was bid before with a, with two one-year options. The Sheriff's Department only wanted to extend it one more year at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Ten, rescind intergovernmental agreement with the City of Mobile wherein the city was to provide $500,000 in funding for a pool renovation project at the former Joe Radford Thomas Recreation Center and reallocate the funding amount from the original intergovernmental agreement to another project to further the implementation of the Mobile Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage Trail District Master Plan. Eleven, approve intergovernmental agreement with the City of Mobile wherein the city shall provide $500,000 in funding toward renovations to the Vernon Crawford Law Office located at 1407 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue in Mobile to further the implementation of the Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage Trail District Master Plan pending legal review.
Trail comes out. There's no trail. It's Civil Rights and Cultural-
Cultural District Master Plan, okay. Twelve, approve First Amendment to the Sims Senior Centers lease to provide that the City of Sims will perform routine light maintenance of the walking trails and other recreational areas with all terms remaining the same. Thirteen, we have a change to the wording as follows. Adopt resolution for the Mobile County Commission to assume supervision and administration of the Detention Facility Division of the James T. Strickland Youth Center and its related employees pending legal review. Fourteen, approve First Amendment lease agreement with Mobile Area Interfaith Conference, which provides Mobile Area Interfaith Conference with an additional 125 square feet of office space in the Bay Hayes Building with all other terms remaining the same. Fifteen, approve change order number five with Mid-America Golf and Landscape for Project Mobile County Golf Course, Project Golf Course Phase. This change order will increase the contract amount by $57,226.95 and increase the contract time by two days. The new contract will be in the amount of $14,502,237.7. Sixteen, approve appropriation contract with Marching Cougars Band Booster Club in the amount of $10,000 from District 1 Education Funds for band equipment, instrument repairs, uniforms, and operational expenses. Number seventeen will ask to be voted at conference. Approve request of the City of Pritchard, District 1 Councilmember Annie Williams to use the Eight Mile Shopping Center parking lot at no charge for her annual Essential School Giveaway Event on Saturday, August 16th.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you.
Eighteen, we'll change the wording as follows. Approve no-cost grant amendment with Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Project Redevelopment by La Batry City Docks to extend the period of performance to August 28th, 2028. Nineteen, approve statement of work with OpenGov providing for cloud-based solutions for tracking internal county maintenance projects, which include a module that will integrate with existing software in the total amount of $72,724.52 to be paid as follows. Twenty, we have a change to be read as follows. Approve appropriation contract with the Town of Dauphin Island in the amount of $4,961.37 from District 3 Commission Funds for operational expenses at the Dauphin Island Community Center.
Eddie, I'd ask, I did not ask, but I'm asking now if there's no legal reason, could we vote on that today? Jay, is there any reason why we?
None that I'm aware of.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you.
Twenty-one, approve contract amendment number five to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services to add construction engineering and inspection services. Twenty-two, approve contract amendment number nine with Thompson Engineering for Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan to add additional structural engineering design to the Dave Patton House renovation project. Twenty-three, approve contract amendment number one to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates to add engineering and design services for Escatawah Hollow Park and Campground South Expansion. Twenty-four, approve appointments to the Mobile City-County Youth Drug Education Council to represent Mobile County District 1 as follows. Item 25 will be amended as follows. Reject all bids for legal services for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant Program. The bids received exceeded the estimated cost.
So what were, what were we hoping they, the numbers would come in, Gordon? Well, first, how many submit, submitters did we have in most of the range?
Good morning, Commissioners. So we received one submission for this bid. We had to estimate the costs ahead of time, and it was about triple what we had budgeted for. However, we looked at the kind of aggregate cost of it and decided that we didn't have to do formal bids, we could do price quotes instead. So that's the approach we're going to be taking.
Okay, so you don't need to rebid?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You do, or you do not have to rebid? You're going to-
Don't have to rebid.
The Commission's authorizing rebid.
Yes, we were going to amend that to remove-
Okay.
-a portion of it. So the, the language for Monday will not include rebidding.
Okay, okay.
Twenty-six, reject all bids for homebuyer training for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant Program and authorize rebid. The bids received exceeded the estimated cost.
Gordon. So what happened here?
Very similar. We had to estimate it upfront based on what our costs have been in the past, and the cost came in much higher than expected.
So how many submitters did we have?
We had three submitters for this.
We're going to rebid this one, or can it be negotiated through?
We're going to rebid it, but we have taken another look at our, our cost estimate and revised it.
Okay. Because there, there are some people who've been doing, we, who've been doing this with us for a while. We just weren't able to-
They, they responded, but they increased their cost.
Okay.
Twenty-seven, authorize advertising requests for qualifications for Design Professional Code compliance to provide professional evaluation, design, and administrative services for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant Program. Re-advertising due to no responses received. Twenty-eight, approve granting distribution facilities easement to Alabama Power for electrical service at 4455 Windsor Road South. Twenty-nine, consider taking the following action on this bid. Thirty, approve 36-month license agreement with SHI International Corporation in the total amount of $178,523.76 for the Microsoft Volume Licensing Program under the current state of Alabama contract for the revenue commission to be paid as follows. Thirty-one, approve renewal of software agreement with Suretech in the amount of $12,500 for unlimited Casper connections for the Sheriff's Office. Thirty-two, adopt preliminary resolution authorizing 2025 Capital Improvement Plan Projects for issuance of General Obligation Improvements Warrants Series 2025 in an aggregate principal amount not to, expected to exceed $35 million for various capital improvements, including continued, continued improvements to the county's park system, Mobile County Sportsplex, and Cypress Creek Golf Course, as well as other improvements to county facilities. Pending legal review. And Commissioners, we will have a meeting of the Indigent Care Board on Monday as well.
Jay, did you need, anybody text you today? You need to add anything to the agenda before we move forward?
The meeting is not over, but not so far.
It's too early, isn't it?
That's right. We got 10 minutes to go.
Okay. I just, just wanted to check with you, sir.
And at Kim's request, I'm going to read the agenda items for engineering. Consider taking the following action. One, approve proposed and final plat of Camilla Square and proposed and final plat of Crawford Lane's addition, and proposed and final plat of resub of lots 1 through 4 Audubon Point Dog River Lane, and proposed and final plat of resubdivision of Lot 1 Heritage Acres. Two, approve final, final plat of Roberts Road Estates Unit 3 and authorize the county engineer to sign the plat and update the following street in the private road inventory, Roberts Boulevard. This street has been constructed to a paved private road standard and is certified by the developer's professional engineer. Three, approve proposed plat only of Walshwood Glen. This is a private road subdivision, and the roads within the subdivision will not be accepted by the Mobile County for maintenance. Four, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects. Five, approve Mobile County Fiscal Year 2025 Rebuild Alabama Contract Report in accordance with Act 2019-2 Rebuild Alabama Act. Six, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 12 on Wheatcroft Road North in the amount of $8,335 for Project Wheatcroft Road North Gray Drain Base and Pave. Seven, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 1 on Striped Drive in the amount of $7,500 for Project Bass Drive, Brim Drive, and Striped Drive Gray Drain Base and Pave. Eight, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 7 on Ziegler Boulevard in the amount of $52,632 for Project Ziegler Boulevard Additional Lanes. Nine, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements in the total amount of $10,185 for Project Lambert Cemetery Road and Bill Neighbors Road Gray Drain Base and Pave to be divided as follows. And that is all, Commissioners.
Anything else? We had a couple announcements.
We have several announcements today. First, we would like to make everyone aware that the volunteer program at the Mobile County Animal Shelter is now open for signups, and so you can make a life, a difference in the life of a furry friend and hopefully lend a paw. The general, oh, never mind, that's a different picture. Okay, sorry. Second, we have, July is International Picnic Month, and we've been featuring all of the parks that have, you know, picnic tables, pavilions, and other facilities. And we would invite everyone to get out before the month ends afterward and enjoy picnics at Mobile County Parks. We have wonderful new pavilions at several parks, so please take advantage. Third, the dates are out for Mobile County's Operation Clean Sweeps for Fall. So we'll have September 20th, October 18th, November 8th, and December 6th.
Question. Does this include tire collections?
Yes, ma'am. So it's, it's, it's household and yard debris, tires, scrap metal, and electronics. Not hazardous waste, hazardous chemicals. Also, number four, today is a free Thursday at Mobile Museum of Art, and they have several programs running this summer where different groups can get in for free, but Thursdays are always free courtesy of the Mobile County Commission. And they expanded their program recently by partnering with the Karen Foundation of Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and so now all Alabama residents can get in free on Thursdays. So get out and enjoy some free public art. Number five, oh, no, number four. Wait, we're off. Sorry. The DPA program will begin taking applications on August 4th. We're going to have the application set on the webpage for the Home Ownership Down Payment Assistance Program. And so this is very exciting. So it will open on August 4th. Fifth, we'd like to congratulate Commissioner Hudson. She won two nappies this year at the Land Yap Readers' Toys Awards. She was selected as the Hardest Working Elected Official for Mobile County and the Epitome of a Servant Leader. So congratulations, Commissioner Hudson. Next, last week, there was a luncheon honoring the STEP Summer Youth Employment Internship Program of Mobile County participants. So the students and their supervisors were invited to attend. This Mobile County program has been championed by Commissioner Ludgood, and it provides vital workplace experience for local college students, helping them develop job skills. The Commission would like to thank participating employers and commend the interns for their hard work this summer. And next? Next? Oh, it's, okay, there we go. So this is La Batry Waste Water Outfall Line Project is complete, and we sent out information on that yesterday, and we rolled out with this nice video that shows the construction project in action. So we wanted to show that today as well. So please. So that was, Megan went out offshore and got some of that footage and video and put that together for us. We were happy to roll that out. And finally, yeah, it's very nice. We'd like to remind everyone to connect to Mobile County on socials. We, we post regularly on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Google, and Twitter. So please connect with us. And Commissioners, do y'all have anything else to announce?
I just wanted to make an announcement about the Annual Kids Day at the Tillman's Corner Community Center on Carol Plantation Road. That's this Saturday. From 9:00 to 1:00, there'll be free school supplies, uniforms, starting at 9:00 o'clock, snow cones, food trucks, and games, petting zoo. This is hosted by the Southwest Chamber. Every year, give away hundreds of book bags and uniforms and supplies for kids in the community. The parking primarily will be at Griggs Elementary School, and there's over, there'll be overflow parking at the Tillman's Corner Baptist Church. They're on Three Knots with a trolley that will bring people back, back and forth to the event. And I also wanted to announce the services for Mr. Callahan will be this Saturday, the 26th. For Friends will be from 11:30 to 1:00 at the St. Vincent DePaul Church there on Three Knots Road. And then there will be a mass, and then a graveside service at Pinecrest on Dauphin Island Parkway following that. So I just wanted to make that announcement. And as Commissioner Ludgood said, remember George's family in this time of loss for them. It's, and not just for them, but it's, it's a loss to our community. George has certainly been an active member of our community before he was in the state senate, and after, he has really stayed involved, even up to the last few weeks, serving on boards in Mobile County, and attending those meetings up until he got ill. So just remember the family and the community. It's a great loss to, to the community. So thank you for that.
We stand adjourned and pay attention, be weather aware, and try to stay dry. Have a good day. Have a good day.